Call the meeting to order, please. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for our invocation. Deacon John Lescalet is with us from Anglican Church of the Atonement.
Actually, I've been promoted. I'm Father John now.
I thought so, but it says deacon, but you're promoted.
Father John. Father John. Congratulations on your.
Thank you. Please pray with me. God of justice and mercy, we thank you for the gift of living in this beautiful part of your creation and for the opportunity to serve the people of Fountain Hills. Help us to act with character and conviction. Help them to listen with understanding and goodwill. Help them to speak with charity and restraint. Give them this continued spirit of service. Remind them that we are stewards of your authority. Guide them to be leaders of the community needs. Help them to see the humanity and dignity of those who disagree with them and treat all persons, no matter how weak or poor, with the reverence due your creation. And finally, Father, renew in them the strength of your presence, the joy of helping to build a community that the citizens of Fountain Hills proudly call their home. We ask this as your sons and daughters, confident in the goodness of your goodness and love. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Father John.
Will Cole please be there?
Mayor Kavanaugh?
Here.
Vice Mayor Legay?
Here.
Councilmember Magazine is absent. Councilmember Yates?
Present.
Councilmember Hanson?
Here.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember DePorter?
Here.
All right, we go on to the first item under my report, which is a proclamation recognizing Jackie and Jerry Miles for their personal, professional, and financial contributions to the town of Fountain Hills. And Jerry and Jackie are here with us today.
This is a party.
Whereas Jackie and Jerry Miles are recognized for their tireless efforts to help Fountain Hills grow and their personal, professional, and financial contributions are evidenced in almost every facet of our community. And whereas the incubation of the Fountain Hills Community Center Plan began during Mayor Jerry Miles' term, he initiated the major fundraiser that furnished the River of Time Museum and developed and continues to be central to the River of Time Museum Foundation. Whereas the Fountain Hills Sister Cities Program was established during Mayor Jerry Miles' term, Jackie Miles has served on the Sister Cities Committee and is the current president. Whereas Fire Rock, Eagle Mountain, and the Copperwind Developments were put into place, the Hillside Protection Ordinance, the Temporary Sign Ordinance, and the Bed Tax were approved during Mayor Jerry Miles' term. And whereas Fountain Park and the Avenue of the Fountains median were acquired from NCO by the town during Mayor Jerry Miles' term. And whereas the Fountain Hills Public Art Collection is named Milestones: A Desert Odyssey Through Public Art, to honor its founders, Jackie and Jerry. And whereas Jackie Miles served on the Senior Services Board, the Community Center Advisory Commission, and initiated the In-Home Concerts Program. And whereas Jackie Miles was the driving force for the town's Holiday Lighting Program and the annual Poinsetia Tree Display. Now therefore, I, Lynda M. Kavanaugh, Mayor of the Town of Fountain Hills, do hereby proclaim February 20th, 2016, as Jackie and Jerry Miles' Day in the Town of Fountain Hills. Congratulations. Okay. Next is my review of recent events related to economic development, and I just have three short items. I talked, I spoke last meeting that I was planning on having a 101 with a GPEC CEO, Chris Camacho. We discussed some of the unique issues that Fountain Hills has with attracting businesses and how GPEC can help. We discussed resources available to the town, and Chris mentioned how he enjoyed working with Scott Cooper, our Economic Development Director. We did have a MAGD meeting, but it was primarily issues that we had already discussed, getting an update. The only new issues were some legislative bills, especially one that was going to take some transportation sales tax money from MAGD to help pay for the Arizona Department of Revenue. I gave my State of the Town this morning, and that video will be on the town website for all residents to watch. The reason I put this in my economic development report tonight is because the State of the Town is a presentation of all our town accomplishments and future plans. These are what potential residents and business, and business owners will be looking at to decide if this is the place for them. I know that once they get to experience Fountain Hills like we do, they will agree that this is the best place in the valley. And just on that note, I want to thank the staff for the fabulous job they did to make the State of the Town totally unique this year. The Chamber of Commerce, putting together the entire program, but especially on our staff, I want to thank our town manager, Grady Miller, who allowed the staff to work on the project. I want to thank Mike Chikaron, who did the most fabulous job on the video that we saw, the whole presentation, and also to Nancy Walter, my assistant, who took everything and gathered it and worked so hard to put it together. We have a tremendous staff. They work very hard at the jobs that they have, but to ask them to do something extra, well, they were very enthusiastic and they wanted to make sure that it was so perfect because they are just equally as proud of this town as we are, and they wanted us to shine, and we certainly did. So if you weren't able to be there this morning, go on the website and take a look and see what your town has been up to, what your town council has accomplished in the past year, and look at those great plans that we have for the future. Thank you. Now we have a presentation by MCSO Captain David Loturno regarding law enforcement's use of body cameras and change in deputies' shift schedule hours.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Thanks for having me here tonight to present these two topics. A lot of questions were coming up, and so we thought it would be a good idea to kind of demonstrate, show you the equipment, answer any questions that you might have as far as how we're working it, how it works, what we're doing with it, how we'll wear it, and how it will be used in patrol. I have a PowerPoint to present also, but it's kind of on the technical end, and so I'm gonna, I'm gonna hit the highlights. But any questions you have, feel free to ask as I go, and I'll answer as we go. The equipment itself is pretty basic. I brought it, I brought a piece of it to show you. I can even let you handle it if you'd, if you'd like to. It's real basic. The camera itself, that's the whole camera. Very small, sound, high definition. It's, it's been working great, not only up here in Fountain Hills, but it's now countywide. All the districts in patrol are wearing it. It is basically a patrol tool, so only guys making traffic stops and calls for service are wearing it. Therefore, you won't see me wearing it because most of the time I'm not out making traffic stops. If you see the guys walking around the building or the district, what we call the district, they'll all have it. It will be worn, the primary place to be worn, you'll see it on the head, either on a hat, sunglasses. Some of the equipment it comes with is just a regular pair of Oakley sunglasses. With a magnet attached, and it just, it clips right on that way. If, they come in sunglasses and clear lenses, so some of the issues that we've had or noticed with it as we work the kinks out is if you're wearing it during the day, you're in your sunglasses, and now you walk into a house, you're not just gonna be able to take your sunglasses off and deal with it. So there's also a device that they call a halo, which goes around the back of your head and clips on, and then there's a magnet, and the camera clicks on that. Some of the guys complain about that. It gets tight on your head after a period of time.
Thirteen hours.
Exactly. Which we'll talk about later. You can wear it that way. The hat clip seems to be the most comfortable. That just clips on the, clips on the hat, magnet on that, and you're ready to go. There is another device that we wear on our collar, so the inside of my collar, it's hidden, same thing. There's a magnet here, you clip it on the magnet, and you're ready to go. The problem with this, which should be the most comfortable, if you imagine the camera being on your collar or your lapel, as you can see, the size of the person can really dictate what you're capturing on video. The other problem is if I'm addressing someone on a traffic stop or a call for service and something happens to my right or left, if it's on my head when I turn, it catches everything. If it's on my collar, I turn my head, it's still facing this way. So these are some of the things that have come up that were, we have worked the kinks out. You'll see some guys not on a collar on a traffic stop. They'll wear it on their collar, but they're instructed as they go for a call for service or a traffic stop, you have to put it in a primary. So on the head would be a primary position, collar would be a secondary position. You won't be video, you shouldn't be videotaping in a secondary position. So to jump in the PowerPoint, these are some of the factors. Minimize risk factors, increase transparency, lower the use of force incidents, and one of the big ones for us in all law enforcement is to reduce complaints. And what that means is now everything's on video, so the he said, she said incidents lessen because we have video footage to capture it. One of the big things in law enforcement these days, if you don't know it, are citizen complaints, and so this helps us greatly with that. A 30-second buffer, we've actually backed it up to a two-minute buffer, and all that means is, I forgot to show you, this is a battery pack, very small. The guys have to wear this on their belt. To start the camera, you push the button, it's on. The buffer zone means it rolls back, so when I push the button, if I was on video right now, it rolls back two minutes, so it captures what I said two minutes ago from the time I started recording. And that's in case the guys forget to turn their camera on right away. There's a buffer zone built in, because what will the public say? You purposely missed the first two minutes of the call because you didn't start it. That's, you did it on purpose. So the buffer zone is to clear that up. It won't be perfect, but it'll be better than missing the first two, two minutes or 30 seconds. A complete view, if you look at the box on the right, that basically, the point would be the camera, and it, it flares out from there and captures quite a bit. And then on a lot of calls, when you figure there's two guys on a call, you've got two different angles, two, two ways to capture sound. The quality is unbelievable. I wasn't able to get anything over here because we haven't cleared up yet what we can show to the public because of public record. I would have loved to show you a video, and I thought the PowerPoint had it, but it doesn't. So any questions as we go up, please let me know. It's very durable. The retina low light, that's key because you can, like any video camera, you can adjust the contrast, you can make the picture better, and that was a point of contention for the sheriff's office, but lawyers too. You don't want to make the video, you don't want to tweak the video better than what the human eye can see, because let's say an incident with a weapon. I might think it's a weapon when it's not, where the video clearly shows it's not, so you don't want the video to be better what the human eye shows. It's not tricks, it's just as we, as we handle calls and explain use of force issues and what happened on scene, it would be very bad if the camera actually picks up better than the naked eye can see. So it's not that we're hiding anything, you just don't want to tweak the camera where you could see in the dark when the human eye can't see in the dark. Does that make sense? Simple dock and walk, what that means is you can dock it. Every night, the guys, if the day shift guys work all day today, every day at the end of shift, they put this in a docking station in, in our office, and it downloads the video for that current day, and then it uploads into the cloud, literally, a large, the cloud, the storage system. This equipment is through the company Taser, so the same company that developed the Tasers has developed this. This is their product. They also run the cloud. So good hindsight, if you could have invested in this company many years ago, you'd be doing very, very well. There's mobile apps and that kind of thing where we can set it up to view it on a cellphone or an iPad at a later time, but what happens is the guys download their video, the checks, the weight, the checks and balances on this system is the sergeant of that squad does a weekly audit. They view two videos from each deputy each week, random, but we can always pull up anything we want at any time. But to self-checking, to make sure we're covering traffic stops the correct way, they'll do a self-audit, two videos a week per deputy.
How long is this gonna be stored?
Depending on whether it's a felony or a misdemeanor. Misdemeanors are up to five years, and felonies are 12.
Adam, Mayor. Out of curiosity, just like in bar restaurant business where you have rolling digital video, why wouldn't it just be that you capture everything and then you go back and, and it's automatically kept for a week or two weeks or whatever the capacity is, and then you can cut it up, as opposed to taking the ability, I shouldn't say the ability, instead of requiring the officers to start and stop it?
Battery life, that's basically the whole thing, battery life. The batteries are lasting, lasting for upwards of straight eight hours, continuous use. My guys work 13-hour shifts, so we, we couldn't buy enough batteries for the entire office. That's the main reason. And then never knowing what video you're gonna really need. The criminal stuff, that's easy, but we really never know when someone's gonna call in a complaint, say your, your deputy was rude to me, which is something we have to look into, and now we have the ability to go back and pull it up and make quick decisions. Well, my guy wasn't rude to you, you were just angry because you got a speeding ticket or whatever the case may be. So that's most of the reasons for those issues.
Got it.
What, what happens to, if what you've recorded doesn't really turn out to be a crime, do you still keep that?
It still goes into the cloud because we just don't know, after a certain amount of time, I'm sure they'll clear out wasted video that doesn't go anywhere, but we'll still keep most video for a time because of the possibility of any complaint that may come forward, or a use of force issue or something like that.
So let's say that you go on a call and you come in a situation where, let's say a woman's been assaulted, so she's in a state of undress, and, I mean, is, is this all gonna be on the camera showing her like that?
On the initial call upon arrival, yes. If you're a victim, you can make a request to not be taped, or your, your voice could be picked up, you could step out of camera sight. If you're a suspect, no, you will be videotaped. But a true victim, yes, they could opt out of the video.
But they, but if the, if the deputy walks in and turns on the camera, she's probably already on camera before she realizes he has a camera. I mean, are they gonna?
Well, remember.
How do you, how do you deal with that?
That camera will be activated when he pulls up on scene, so when he knocks on the door, the video will be on, and then they'll have to play it by ear, how the call rolls out, whether or not to turn it off, or give her the chance to get dressed, whatever the scenario may be. So, but initially, yeah, because we don't know what we're getting into, there will be footage captured that the victim may not want. If you think of, of a domestic violence call, for example, we get the call on the radio, they, they arrive, they knock on the door, they don't know what they're getting into. If she answers the door in that state, yes, that will be on video, but then a decision could be made. We're, we're under no, not that it's a secret, but we're not under obligation to walk up and say, hey, I'm videotaping you. And so it, it could be a judgment call where the deputy then says, ma'am, you might want to get dressed, or, you know, let me get you over here and, and handle it that way. But initially, there's no way we can separate when it goes on or when it goes off because we just know what's gonna happen when we knock on that door. We know what type of call it is, but sometimes we have calls, unknown trouble, we don't know what we're going into.
Right. Okay. Any, any questions? Okay, go on. Oh, I'm sorry, you have a question?
No, I'm waiting.
Okay, go on.
Evidence.com, that's one of the technical ones. That's where we go to view the tapes. We can sit in the office here and wa, and view the downloaded videos, and we can make notes on it, and we can decide where it needs to go after that. Sometimes it's gonna need to go to courts, stuff like that. That's one of those technical ones we don't need to get too deep into, but that's what That is a little bit, when you get into Evidence.com, how you can pull it up. You can pull up mapping and visualization and, and different formats, the very technical end of things. It doesn't have anything to do with the operations of the cameras, it's how we view it, how we store it, put it in the cloud, those type of things. This same thing, Evidence.com, we still have to decide how, if these cases go to court, for example, here in town, Mr. Yakovino, how, how we're gonna get evidence to him so that he can view it in court and take care of it. He's probably gonna get his own ability to view it, but just view it. He obviously isn't gonna be able to make any changes on it. He'll be able to pull it out of the cloud and, and view it that way. Use of force incidents, so it could be anything from just trying to take a guy into custody where you have to go hands-on and maybe fight or have a skirmish a little bit, all the way up to the level of use of force, deadly use of force, a shooting incident like that. That's gonna, the camera angles, the high-definition video, it's incredible what this picks up, but it, it can still miss stuff, or different angles, but it, what it does is later, a minor use of force, you can view it and kind of remind yourself of what happened after a 13-hour shift when you have to sit down and write that report. Major incidents, we've got policy in place where you cannot review the video prior to writing your report. You have to kind, so a shooting, you have to sit down and be interviewed by detectives and roll with it that way. That's just a precautionary, that we want, we want you to tell us your story, what happened, how you remember it. Don't rely on the video to do that. Complaints and allegations will drop, which we've already seen that. We've already had three incidents where somebody called in a complaint for rudeness on traffic stops, and you can clearly watch it, the deputies were not rude. So far, we haven't had a valid complaint where the camera has showed that our deputies are in the wrong, or were rude, or unprofessional, or something like that, in District 7. I don't know about the other districts. I'm just strictly talking about Fountain Hills. Special consideration, so I had to call on that one. Recording of juveniles, what that means is, not that we can't record a juvenile that's driving, it's, we're not gonna randomly walk through the high school videoing juveniles. I could probably walk through the mall with my camera on for a call and be fine, but because strictly juveniles at a school, we, there's just no reason to walk on campus without a call for service. For example, the resource officer will not be wearing a camera at the school unless she's responding to something out in front of the school, a complaint, somebody speeding, something like that, but she won't be wearing and filming incidents at the school. It's just not necessary. Not to hide anything, but because they're juveniles.
But would she have her camera with her in case on the school property, something happens, she can put it on?
Correct.
Okay.
Locations and content of recordings, I mean, if you can imagine the different, not in town, but the different places that are out there that deputies respond to, different bars, establishments like that, and we will not record on body cameras undercover operations. So drug transactions, anything where our guys are actually working undercover, those guys will not be wearing body cameras.
Go ahead, Councilman Yates.
Obviously, we'll get into cost, but before we get, go there, anytime we have this kind of presentation and you start talking about different types of crimes and felonies and misdemeanors, could you give us a quick stat of what kind of crime that we have existing in Fountain Hills and that? We're not having this crime wave?
Unfortunately, Councilman Yates, not tonight, I wasn't prepared for that. I was worried about the cameras in my next presentation on the 4:10 schedule, but I can get that.
If I may, Mayor, if you could, not holding you to complete metrics and statistics, can you generically give us a, an idea that, is crime going up, is crime going down? I, I mean, I, I love the idea of having this, but it's not because we're reacting to a crime wave?
When we talk crime in town, nothing's going up. If we talk, as you know, and we've been asked by you guys, reference the Speedway now we call Saworal, that has picked up, and we're enforcing that. Primarily, the reason for the cameras, and maybe I should have said this earlier, the sheriff's office is under compliance in dealing with the Department of Justice and a court-ordered issue. They focused on cameras for traffic stops, traffic stops only. That's the real reason we went to it. Initially, we were just gonna buy dash cameras that would focus on the dash of a car just for traffic stops, but as we looked into it as an office, we decided body cameras would be, we think, better because it covers more calls for service. What we're required for in the compliance is only traffic stops, and so, long answer, short answer is, no, crimes in Fountain Hills aren't out of whack or higher than they've been, other than what we've been asked, traffic stops we have picked up because as, as the council knows and we know. Traffic stops, we have picked up because, as the council knows and we know, there's been more speeding on Saworal. So, we've been working on that pretty hard to try to knock that down.
Get it paid for faster.
Well, cost, it's amazing. We got over seven hundred cameras from Taser for a dollar, because the money's in the storage in the cloud. That's where they're gonna make their money. So, the equipment itself is not that expensive, but the storage is outrageous. But, you have to pay for it.
Excuse me, to the council member's point, we'll make sure that we provide the stats to the council regarding the crime statistics.
And we have it. I just didn't bring it to them.
I have a question about the FOIA. Is there any, anything that you're going on right now as far as who can you release a video to?
Well, obviously, right now, we can, that I know of, we can release it to the county attorney, who then releases it, if necessary, to defense attorneys, which could also be county attorneys. But, as far as public record requests, I don't know that all that has been worked out yet. I don't believe that anyone can come up right now and get it. And I know that's been talked about in legislation, and Senator Kavanaugh has been a big proponent of not making it so easily accessible, because it is a concern. Anybody could make a public request for anyone they know that's on video camera. I don't know where that sits right now. I get those instructions from downtown, our lawyers and the chiefs down there, and that's still being worked on and sorted out.
And I know there were two major issues with that. The first was that a witness could be put in danger by someone asking for a video, whereas you were trying to keep that witness safe by not exposing that person's name or, you know, any identity. And the other thing that I know was brought out by residents, where they were concerned about actually having the inside of their homes on video for potential burglary, that someone could know that someone lives in a multimillion-dollar home, and now they can get this film because there was an incident there, and they could see exactly what's in the home.
And those issues go on and on and on. And I know they're still working for it, working through it. But I know also, in the state of Arizona, Mesa PD has gone to it. I think Tempe PD has released, not to everybody, not all their officers, but a certain portion. We're the first, we're the biggest agency that have gone to it in the state of Arizona. But back east and other states, they're working through that process and working out the kinks. And I'm sure we're not gonna recreate the wheel. We're gonna duplicate what those other agencies are doing across the country.
But, right now, within your own department, you have the right to make your own, let's say, rules about it?
Correct, right now.
You're allowed to do that.
In the infancy stage, correct.
Okay.
Because there are many things, even now, Queen Creek went on it about four months ago. Fountain Hills was the next town that went to it. But now, all six of our districts are on it. And so, we're still working the kinks out. We found a couple of things to tweak it. We came up with a hand signal. If you were to see any of my guys out on a call and they make this, "I'm rolling, I'm videoing," and then open it up, "I'm done videoing." That's just so you know. We could walk in the district and be dealing with a walk-up call, and the guys could be videotaping. So, it's important for us to know that deputy's videotaping so that you don't get extra noise or any comments that might affect that call that would go on video, because it picks up everything.
Okay. Any questions?
Mayor, I do have a quick one. Captain Letourneau, thank you for the presentation. With respect to safeguards in place for editing, and I know that's been something that citizenry are concerned about, that an officer may take, you know, capture some film, and when it's presented in court, prior to going to court, somehow, some way, it could be edited. Are there safeguards there? Who would have the capability of editing, or is it locked out from editing? I know stuff's in the clouds. Is my question clear?
It is locked out, Councilman Legay. So, the evidence program that I pulled up on the PowerPoint, we cannot edit it. All we can do is view it. We can't take anything out or add anything from a deputy here in the station, or even downtown. And the reason for that is, to show a video, to go to trial on a video that's gonna be entered as evidence, you have to show everything. So, let's say the first five minutes are nothing, but in a case of a jury trial or just a judge trial, you have to enter the entire video from start to finish. So, to answer it, long and short, no, we have no ability to edit it.
So, it's treated like any other evidence, and it's protected from being tampered with primarily?
Correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Okay.
Guess we're good.
So, the next issue is, I don't have a fancy PowerPoint for it, because we're still working the kinks out. But I know it's valuable to know, the deputies in Fountain Hills, all of patrol, work three days, thirteen hours a day. Very long day. And we've come to the conclusion at the sheriff's office that it's unsafe. It's just too long of a day. So, we are going to move forward with a plan of going to 4:10s, four ten-hour days, which most agencies, and a lot of, the town is on 4:10s. Much safer, less time at work, more time at home instead of at work. And it doesn't alter the town contract at all. In fact, if you, and I can show it, I just don't have it in a PowerPoint, but I can answer questions about it. There will be more guys on the road at any given time of the day. It will put, currently, I have squads of three and a sergeant, or four deputies and a sergeant. That's the way it works out here with the contract. We are moving to the 4:10, which eliminates or adds a squad. I currently have six squads. 4:10s will add a seventh squad at any given time of the day, except for Tuesdays and Wednesday mornings from 2:00 a.m. to 8:00 a.m. Those two days, I will have what we currently have right now, four deputies and a sergeant. Every other day and every other minute of the day, I'll have double squads on. So, I'll have two sergeants and six or seven guys on the road. So, we're gonna be bumping into each other out here, which is a good thing. It will help us greatly answer calls for service, but it will help us with the traffic issues that come up in town. Not that it affects the town contract, but it helps me cover a little bit more in the back of Rio Verde. As they're moving dirt through town from the golf course, we're having major issues as they go through the back way of town and hit Rio Verde where they're dumping the dirt, speeding, heavy loads, that kinda thing. So, it's gonna help with those type of calls. It doesn't increase the cost of the contract whatsoever. We were hoping to roll with this in March, but as we are working out the kinks, we're realizing, not only in Fountain Hills, but the other districts, we're a couple cars short to really pull it off. I have enough cars here, but it leaves me with one spare. So, if we lose a car to the shop, we're out of spares. Well, that's bad. When the cars run 24/7, we could be a car down. But even with that, we can work two guys to a car, which is fantastic.
We could get you a bike.
We have bikes.
There you go. He can bike around the park.
Well, and we've thought about it, we've talked about it. I gotta get guys to go to bike school, though. That's one of those certifications where you can't get hurt. I mean, anyone can ride a bike, but to ride it like-
You have to go to bike school.
A police officer or a deputy sheriff, it's a little bit. But, so, the plan is ready to go. We just gotta work out a couple kinks, and I need to get one more sergeant out here. So, like I said, it's gonna be great for the town at no extra cost to the town. We'll have guys everywhere, which is not a bad thing at all. It's good for us, it's good for the guys, it's good for the town. That's it in a nutshell until we work the kinks out. But if, just imagine, double squads on every day except Tuesday and Wednesday mornings.
Sounds great.
It is good. It's a good thing, all the way around.
It's good news for us.
We're very, as a captain running the district, I dislike the 313s. It's too much. My guys are always tired. You worry about them. That's thirteen hours if you don't have any problems. Some guys are here fifteen hours finishing their paperwork, and it's just too long of a day. So, we finally, it was a perk in the beginning, giving guys four days off a week, but in the long run, after a couple years, it's just too much. So, that's the reason for the change.
All right. Any questions about the new schedule?
Sounds great.
Great job, man.
All right, well, thank you. Thank you very much. It's all good news for us.
It is a good thing, that's for sure.
Okay. All right. So, we will go on to our call to the public. Do we have any speaker cards?
Yes, Mayor, we have two speakers. Will Williams, followed by Gordon Pitsenberger.
I gave you a handout to kinda follow along there, too.
And you are, just identify yourself, and you live in Fountain Hills?
I do, thirty-two years.
Thank you. Okay. Just for the record.
Okay. I timed this to two minutes and forty-five seconds, so, okay. All right. So, my name's Will Williams. I'm a retired high school principal. I've been here thirty-two years, and I'm a United States Marine Corps veteran. My first minute, I wanna compliment how much my dog and I enjoy the new Avenue of the Fountain Strolling Path. It's just terrific to be able to walk down there, and there's baggies and everything, so we really enjoy that. But as any good citizen, I need to make a complaint. Crossing from the east and the west sections is kind of cumbersome. There's no crosswalks or anything designated that says, "This is the way you go," and so you're always jaywalking every time you go across those paths there. So, many of you have traveled internationally, I'm sure, and a lot of times, they have a big X there where you can go in any direction. And so, maybe that would be something. Mr. Brown could probably decide one in his sleep, I'm sure. So, anyway, with some signage and some safety concerns, you know, just look into that. We had the big car show down there this weekend, and, you know, folks were walking up and back, and, you know, this man could've arrested a hundred people for jaywalking that day. Okay, so, anyway, I want to personally express my gratitude to Mr. Brown, Mr. DePorter, and all the other council members who returned my call. Mr. Magazine, I'm sorry that I called you at 9:30 p.m., but I wanted to make sure you didn't leave in the morning before I got my message. And Ms. Hanson, you don't even know I called you, because when I called, you said, "Rr, rr." And I said, "I'm sorry." Anyway, and Mr. Miller, your easy approach, listening ability, and professional skills were very impressive. When I met with the councilpeople, we discussed some things regarding the Fountain Hills Chamber of Commerce, and each person I met would listen to my concerns with professional and personal interest, openly expressing their thoughts with me. I had discussions with the leadership of the chamber also, sharing the same thoughts. Part of our discussion centered around the Fountain Hills Chamber not being current with technology, new policies and procedures, and modern ways where individuals can slip through the cracks. The internet age is great. Unfortunately, it's also the age of the electronic scam. My personal experience with the current CEO is he is not keeping up with the changing times. Frank Ferrero was my neighbor for twenty-five years. It's understandable that Frank's generation ran a private nonprofit business with a pen, a paper, a rolodex, and a promise to behave. That's unacceptable in 2016. There are many reasons to continually review your liability coverage. Technical savvy is needed when promoting special events. Many new ways to deceive the public. Validity of what vendors' claims need to be verified. Updating applications and checking databases with neighboring chambers is essential. The Leasee must ensure safety for all those in attendance. Slip-and-fall policies are not enough. Policies need to reflect 2016 liability coverage, not 1998. The responsibility to protect the community is indisputably the first priority of both the Chamber and the city. The city and the Chamber are aware of alleged violations of fraud and possible criminal conduct that occurred during a special event. I think this should be investigated. I, of course, understand the city and Chamber's different roles. However, they have an organic relationship that keeps growing. The city and Chamber are viewed as one by many citizens. Thank you.
Thank you.
Did I make it in three minutes?
You're good.
Good.
Okay, thank you.
Okey-dokey. Thank you.
Good morning, Council. Gordon Pitsenberger, 15620 East Choya Drive, thirty-two-year resident in Fountain Hills. And I, first of all, would like to apologize. I missed the February ninth meeting on the environmental fee, did not, wasn't aware of it until after the fact. And I was happy to see in the paper that you are addressing some of the issues. However, there's one that is dear to me that I'd like to bring to your attention. The Target building, and first of all, back up a little bit. Myself and another gentleman own a building on Parkview that is 7,352 square feet. The Target building is over, almost 25,000 square feet. The Dollar Store area there is 88,000 square feet. And Paul's and Bash's is over eleven, over 111,000 square feet. Safeway, 64,000 square feet. All these buildings, because they have the same parcel number, receive a bill of $36. Our building, because we condoize it, we receive a bill of $396. The paper said you were wanting, talking about fairness, and I would really like to see some fairness in this environmental fee. For us to pay $396 and Target to pay 36, it's terribly unfair. And while we're on the subject of fairness, I'd like to also bring up the fire inspection fee. There again, Target pays $15. Our building, because we're condoizing and have eleven units, we pay $165. So, I really would like to see some fairness applied in the fire inspection fee also. When that was passed here, I don't know how many years ago, I spoke up against it and brought up the fact that, why couldn't it be done square footage? At that time, I was told that you didn't have the staff to do it. And I'd just like to bring to your attention, I found these square footages in about two minutes on the assessor's site. I mean, it doesn't take long at all to find the square footage of a property. So, that was the other issue I wanted to address. And one more thing in the vein of fairness, the impact fees that Fountain Hills was charging were above what they should've been, and I understand the state came in and they had to be lowered. I'm wondering when you're gonna return some of that money to the property owners that you took illegally?
Well, Mayor and Council, as you recall, at the special session last week, you gave the town manager the ability to look at individual cases, and this will be one that I will meet with the finance director as it relates to the environmental fee. I do know that due to the fire inspection fee having been challenged a few years back, the fee was reduced, I believe it might've been $35 or more to $15, my understanding from the finance director on that. We can certainly look at these as part of what we normally do through the budget process. We always evaluate our fee schedule, and so, we can certainly do that. And I will be in touch with you. If you can wait after the meeting so I can get your contact information, I can talk to you about the environmental fee and try to get your details.
Okay, good. Thanks, Grady. All right, anything else? Anyone else?
No, Mayor.
Okay. Let's go on to our consent agenda items. We have seven, so I need a motion to accept all seven as written?
Mayor, remove.
And any discussion on that? No, all in favor?
Aye.
Oh, we need a roll call. That's right. This is the one where we have to do a roll call. Sorry. Bev?
Councilmember DePorter?
Aye.
Councilmember Legay, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Legay.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Yates?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
And Mayor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Mayor six-zero.
All right. Regular agenda items, consideration of a request to place a plaque honoring Carlos Haddaway at the Fountain Hills Veterans Memorial or other town property location. Grady?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, before you tonight is a request that originated with the Public Art Committee to have council consideration of a plaque honoring Fountain Hills resident Carlos Haddaway at the Veterans Memorial. In your packet, we have a letter from Sandy Thompson, who's the chair of the Public Art Committee, supporting this request, who is also a veteran and has significantly contributed to the town and its history. Also in your packet is a letter from Sam Coffey. Mr. Coffey is the President of the Fountain Hills Veterans Memorial. As you recall, they're the ones who raised the funds to actually build this memorial over at Fountain Park. He has also included a letter that supports the plaque, and he did have a number of conditions. And he is here tonight, if you wish to have him speak on this matter, I think it would be good for him to do so. Also, I spoke to a few other people before the meeting. I know that Enrique Melendez, the honorary consul from El Salvador, also has requested to speak on this item. Something that, at the time that we had to put the packet together, you recall that it usually, we have to have everything put to, to rest about a week in advance. And so, last week, when this was coming before us, we had to quickly put this together. And there's some reasons for that, which I think some of the members in the audience will probably bring to your attention, why it's significant timing. But at the time, I had looked at the situation where, you know, the memorial recognizes groups of veterans, and, and we have not had yet a request for individuals. And so, the only thing I just want to let you know is, in the staff report, I also indicated that if the council didn't want to go down this particular path, there were other alternatives. And I also asked staff today to come up with some other alternative locations in the event that you wished to consider those as well. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Grady? If not, I'll ask Sam Coffey to come up.
I'm Sam Coffey, I live at 17105 East La Montana Drive. Resident in Fountain Hills for twenty-five years, and I represent the Fountain Hills Veterans Memorial Committee. So, basically, I talked to Jerry Miles about this request for Carlos Haddaway. And just a little bit of history with Carlos. He's a Navy veteran and has been involved down at the memorial since, well, not right at the time the memorial was built, but shortly thereafter. For those of you who have been down to the memorial, you see the Bob Hope plaque that's on one wall down there. And if you go around to the other side of the wall, there's a plaque up there, that's a drawing that Carlos did. It's got the Arizona, USS Arizona as it was sailing, and also as it was going down. Carlos did the drawings on both of those and gave those to us, and we're able to use that for, for fundraising. We own all the publishing rights to those, those two drawings. In addition to that, in 2011, when we were, for Veterans Day, Carlos did a beautiful drawing, and we put on some T-shirts and raised, I think, a couple of thousand dollars that we were able to give to charities and so on. And he's just been a constant supporter of us down there. If you go down and look at that memorial and look at the names on the wall down there, you don't see his name a lot, there are a few times, a few of them up there, but he has also bought a lot of nameplates up there for, for other veterans to honor their service as well. And so, when I got the request, I, and I talked to, to Mark, Mayor, about this. I got the other members of the committee together, and we've got two members from the American Legion, two members from the VFW, and I'm the member from the AMVets on that committee. And basically, we're, we were unanimous in our support of this, as long as that we had something to say about the size of this and the placement. And then the other thing was, and Councilman Leger and I had this discussed this morning, and that is, the concern of this being some kind of a slippery slope, where all of a sudden you might have several people coming forward and saying, "Well, I've got $2,000, $2,500, and I'd like to have a plaque on the wall as well." And we've come to the conclusion that, that because of Carlos's contribution, this is unique, and that we would not welcome a, a request down the road unless somebody had made a very, very significant contribution to the construction and maintenance of the Veterans Memorial. So, we were looking at this, and thinking, looking at probably something around an 11-by-14-inch plaque, and probably place that on the inside of the, the curved wall, or the curved opening in the wall. That would be opposite where the, the bulletin board is down there, where people walking through the memorial will be able to see that on the wall. And of course, Carlos, when he's, well, is walking through there all the time, too, and it'd really be an honor for him, I think. So, if you've got any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Did you want to explain a little bit why this is so timely?
Pardon me?
Did you want to explain a little bit why this is so timely for Carlos?
Well, yeah, that's, that, probably a lot of you are aware of Carlos's had, had a tumor in his, on his brain, and had some significant problems, becoming disoriented, and had some surgery, and that's been removed. He's undergoing chemotherapy and radiation therapies and, and therapy almost every day, I believe. He's doing reasonably well. I've gone over and seen him a couple of times and, and visited with him, but I don't know, it's really unclear what the prognosis is at this point. But I think moving forward with this now would be really the right thing to do, because if something should unfortunately happen to him, then he would be around to see his honor, his contribution.
All right. Any questions for Sam? Questions for Sam?
Thank you.
Yeah, okay. You have speaker cards?
Mayor, we have two speaker cards. Jack Combs, followed by Rick Melendez.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. You know, it's interesting, I come, first meeting ever.
Just identify yourself for the record?
I'm sorry, I apologize.
Just your name and the town?
Jack Combs, 16419 East Farland Drive, Fountain Hills. Been here nineteen years now, came out Southern California twenty-four years ago. And, you know, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmen, all council members. I haven't been to a council meeting in probably twenty-five, twenty-six years. I used to be very actively involved, city of Seal Beach, Orange County. And I, I was surprised, so many young people, that's good. When you get my age, you say, you get the young people to take care of this stuff. A couple of quick things before I'd like to talk about Carlos. Number one, I only remember, I look younger, but I only remember big Irish cops. And my daughter just retired twenty-four years, San Francisco Police Department. And what the captain said is absolutely true, and it works a hundred percent, it really does. And it'll save time and money and may, may well save lives. I met Carlos Haddaway, and by the way, once again, congratulations to my friends, the Miles, great people. I met Carlos about nineteen years ago through my wife and her daughter, and he's become a very good friend. In fact, we're having dinner again tomorrow. Have any of you, maybe by a quick show of hands, ever been to his home?
Yes. Yes, as a matter of fact, my mayor's youth council had a wonderful tour of his home.
Okay. Anyone else? One person sitting up there? Nine people, only one person had been to his home. That's interesting. Have any of you ever seen the plaque that he did of Bob Hope?
Yes.
You've seen it passing, you walked by, did you ever see his name on the side there? He did that. How about the Arizona, if you're, if you're old enough to remember the USS Arizona? Been there twenty times, he did that. He's done a lot of things for the town. He's very quiet. We don't need a lot of, maybe accolades. Carlos and I did Adopt a Dog for seven years. I haven't done it, he hasn't done it for two years. Adopt a Dog is at the fountain, first April every Sunday, master ceremonies, and Carlos was right there with me to help me bring out thirty-five, thirty-six different rescue groups. It wasn't in the paper, there were some pictures of the dogs that were adopted. But all the things he's done, it's very quiet what he does do. But if you ever go to his home, and I suggest you may want to ask, and Linda will certainly recommend it, he's taken many, many, many kids from the high school to junior high, he has taken his time. I have personal friends, personal friends from the Netherlands, he's taken them on the tour of his home. Not ten minutes, but I mean, we're talking two hours. Personal friends from Germany, I'm talking about people, maybe like Enrique. These are people that are in some pretty good government positions. But the urgency of getting this done, because he has done so much, all I can say is it's stage four, and we need to do it soon and not wait. I'm, I'm honored to truly know Carlos, like I said, almost nineteen years. If I could be somebody else, other than myself, I would be Carlos Haddaway. Thank you.
Thank you. And if you walk up the stairs in Town Hall and go halfway up, you'll see a magnificent painting of the Grand Canyon, which was a gift to Town Hall from Carlos. That's right. All right. And next we have?
Rick Melendez.
Council Melendez, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Kavanaugh, Vice Mayor Leger, Councilmembers and staff. I signed in, Mayor, today as Rick Melendez, a former council member, for a reason. I believe many of you heard me make a statement that goes like this. There's an English word, seven-word, seven-letter word in the English dictionary that society doesn't use anymore, and that word is respect. And council, tonight, by approving this project, you will show a great amount of respect to an individual, outstanding individual, who has given so much to our community. Mayor Kavanaugh just mentioned that going up the stairs before you get to the second floor, there's a beautiful painting of the Grand Canyon. And that was a gift that was on behalf, that Carlos gave to the Parks and Recs Department headed by Mark, Mayor, and to you, the Town Council. And he did it as a sign of appreciation and respect. I would like, as a former council mayor, point of privilege, Mayor, to thank each one of you here for the work, and Town Manager, and my good friend Andrew McGuire, for the work that you do for our community on a daily basis, to enhance our quality of life and keep us safe through the services of Maricopa County Sheriff's Office and Capitol Eternal. I also finally would like to thank the Fountain Hills Art Committee, Sandy Thompson, and Jackie, and Jerry Miles, and most important, my wife Pam, who's in the audience today, because she was the originator of the project. Now, during the time I was in the council, my wife only came twice to a council meeting. The first time was when I got sworn in by Judge Shoup in the old building. And the second time, when I left the council, my, my final day, when I said, "Hasta la vista". But it's important that she be recognized. She wouldn't be here unless she felt there was a great importance to this project. So, I ask all of you, with due respect, to approve it, move it forward. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Bev, anyone else? That's it? Okay. Any council discussion on this item? Would anyone care to make a motion on the item?
Mayor, move to approve the installation of a plaque on town property honoring town resident and veteran Carlos Haddaway, and direct the Town Manager to coordinate the specific location, display the plaque with the appropriate parties.
Second. All right, I have a motion and a second. Any other council discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor six-zero.
You've got it. Consideration of Resolution 2016-04, establishing the Fountain Hills Building Safety Board of Appeals, adopting bylaws for its governance, and appointing its members. Grady?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The item before you is a request to establish a Board of Appeals. Board of Appeals are typically found in cities to help those that have specific issues with perhaps the chief building officials' interpretation of the, the adopted Uniform Building Code, or in this case, the International Building Code. It's, it's an appeal process that is very common and found in other cities. We have had a recent request for a, an appeal for a interpretation of the 2012 International Building Code that the Town Council had adopted. And so, what you have before you is the requests from staff to establish the Board of Appeals and adopt the bylaws and appoint its members. And so, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have. We also have our chief building official here tonight, as well as our Development Services Director, who'd be happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Questions for Grady? No questions? No discussion? Okay. Then I move to approve Resolution 2016-04 and appoint Mark Dorman, William Christensen, Thomas Johnston, Wayne Delaware, and Michael Lister to each serve a three-year term on the Building Safety Board of Appeals, beginning February eighteenth, 2016, and appointing Leland Yoder, General Contractor John Bursell, and John French as alternates, with each alternate appointee to serve a three-year term beginning February eighteenth, 2016. Can I get a second?
Second.
All right, and any speaker cards on this item?
No, Mayor.
Any further council discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor six-zero.
Okay, that brings us to discussion with possible direction to staff about the legislative bulletin. And I think our Town Manager wanted to give a little bit of explanation, since there was some confusion about how this would be handled.
Correct. Thank you, Mayor. This is probably going back maybe three meetings ago. We basically outlined a process that if council members saw an item or bill that was identified in the, in the legislative bulletin, to let us know in advance that you'd like to discuss this, please send us either an email or, or other communications to let us know. I, I do know that the last council meeting, Vice Mayor let me know that there were a couple of bills that he was wanting to, to have tracked and, and followed. And I know he wanted to, to speak to those tonight, but that is the process. And I just want to find out if, if you're comfortable with that. If not, we can just have you just keep, just look at the, the legislative bill or bulletin that is in the packet, and you can always bring up any items. But the process that was identified was to help kind of keep the efficient process, so we don't spend a lot of time on bills unless there's some serious ones that you, you have some concerns with. With that, I, I'll turn it back to the mayor. I, I think that the Vice Mayor did have some comments, because he reiterated those to me today as well.
Okay. I guess that's, that would be okay if you want to talk about them. Unfortunately, I hope that everyone had a chance to look over the bulletins and everything that went through. This is the reason why we had asked for them to be sent to Grady in advance, just to give the council a heads-up that these particular ones that we would be discussing, because there's so much involved in these that I just want to give them a chance to investigate. And I know a lot of our council have full-time jobs, and they might not have gotten to every single one of them.
I do want to also comment on one that, one that we had been tracking, and that is the one that Mayor Kavanaugh brought up, I believe, three meetings ago, and that had to do with the, the rental tax. Today was a crazy day, and the mayor brought to my attention that it was in committee, but very likely going to be going to the committee on the whole. And unfortunately, I didn't see her email until later, after this bill had already gone to the committee on the whole. The reason why I bring that up is once a bill goes to the committee on the whole, a town or others that are either opposed or in favor of a particular bill really has lost that opportunity. And I, I do apologize, I didn't see that until...
No, that's fine. You had a very busy day.
So, but I didn't hear the upshot of that, because I continue to have meetings this afternoon.
Well, I, I was watching the live proceedings of the COW, but it had not come up yet. And then I did call Senator Kavanaugh, and I said, "Did I miss something? Did it come up?" And he said, "No", as far as he knew, it hadn't been heard at that time, and then we went into the other meetings. So, I wasn't able to check on that.
Unfortunately, I think because it, it is already scheduled before the COW, I don't believe we can actually do anything at this point.
No, we can't. We can't comment. So, it would go to the committee of the whole, and then third read, and if it passes that, then it would be assigned to the... then it would be assigned to the Senate Committee from there. All right. Vice Mayor Leger?
Thank you, Mayor, and with response to what you had stated earlier in terms of rules of procedure, the two bills that I'm going to mention are in fact in our packet, and they've been there, it's in the Lig notice, and also it's something we've talked about before. So what I'd like to do is just very briefly, in the essence of time, talk about two bills, they're both under firearms. SB 1257 is misconduct involving weapons in public places, and just a brief critique, SB 1257 prohibits cities and towns from restricting firearms in public buildings carried by concealed permit holders unless screening devices and security personnel are in place. This is a bill that's came up in the past that we talked about, voted on, and opposed, and one of the main reasons was, without getting into Second Amendment rights, was the overall cost. And the cost to us to screen four doors would be, on the low end, about $400,000 and on the high end, about $580,000 per data that I've received from the Lig. In respect to that bill, the Lig also opposes that particular bill, so I'd like to request that we track that particular bill and, as time is of the essence, to bring it back for further discussion and a possible vote to do what we've done in the past, which is to write a letter either in favor of it or opposed to it, and I'm frankly opposed to it. The other bill is Senate Bill 1266, it's Firearms State Preemption Penalties. SB 1266 is a repeat bill from last year. This bill contains various penalties to political subdivisions. If they have or adopt an ordinance that is in conflict with state preemption on firearms, these penalties include fines, termination from office, and lawsuits. The Lig also opposes this bill, so I respectfully request that we continue to track these bills, keep us, in terms of time of the essence, if we need to bring this up further for discussion and, as I stated, a possible vote from the Diaz to either, you know, oppose or favor these two bills. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. I just want to speak to 1257. I remember that there was, this bill was brought up, but there is a big change to this bill from the one that was last time. Many of the legislators did have a problem with, since everyone in Arizona can carry a gun, they were opposed to just anybody walking into a public building. This particular bill has been altered so that to allow only concealed carry weapon permit holders to carry the gun into a public building. And as we know, those are people who have taken the concealed carry course, they have, which consists of firearms education, it consists of firearms proficiency, safety with guns, but the biggest part of a concealed carry holder's permit is that they are fingerprinted and you don't get a concealed carry permit if you have any criminal background. So these are law-abiding citizens who carry their guns with them every single day. Oh, and these permits, by the way, are not forever, they have to be, they do expire and they have to be, you have to, I don't remember how many years it is, but it's not a permanent permit. These are law-abiding citizens that carry their guns every day, anywhere. They carry them in bashes, they carry them in other stores. We have a sticker on the building, and the only thing that sticker is going to keep out is some, a bad guy. It's not going to keep out the good guys. The concealed carry holders are the ones who have done it right, they are law-abiding citizens, and they want the right not to have to leave their gun in their car or in the locker. This is a big change from last year, and you don't have to spend any money at all. It doesn't force you to spend money only if you don't allow them to bring the guns in the building. And, you know, anybody right now could have a gun in the building, we know the captain does, but anybody can because the sticker doesn't stop anybody who wants to come in here and do us harm from walking in the building, but that sticker does stop law-abiding citizens from doing it. So I am not opposed to this bill because I think these are law-abiding citizens and they have a right to carry their weapon and protect themselves. So I would not be in favor of being against this one. Anyone else have a comment? Councilman Yates?
So from a matter of where we are with this right now, do we need to say we're in favor or not in favor as written? Is what we're looking for? If I may, Mayor. What I love about being a councilperson is that we're kind of on the ground level of government, that we're dealing with the day-to-day stuff of getting your trash removed, fixing streets, parks, and it's a little upsetting that, I have no problem having a discussion about any topic, but at this level of government, we're talking about some federal things. Yes, it affects us all, and I appreciate that, but I almost feel that we have elected officials to deal with that. My personal feeling, to echo the mayor a little bit, is I'm a history-as-precedence guy, what does the market tell you? And as soon as some restaurants say, "No guns allowed," that's when the robbers go into those restaurants. So along that same line, I agree, putting a sticker up isn't going to stop the good people, or actually, it does wind up stopping the good people, but the bad people just don't read those signs. So my personal feeling is, if it's written as you're saying, that yes, only people with concealed carry license, I'd be in support of that, or if it's written in a negative connotation, I'd be against the opposite. But my personal feeling is, this isn't something we should be messing with, we should be talking about streets and roads and economic development and parks, but if we're going to play our cards or we have to have this discussion, I'm along with you. If you're law-abi, my wife has concealed carry, I do not, I do own a gun, but I would have no issue, because I don't have my concealed carry, bringing it in here, fine, I won't, but someone like my wife, I'd like her to have my back if something happens. So, thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, if I may, if I may comment, please. I think it is a local issue because I've had constituents, year after year, tell me that they don't want their children in this library with people sitting next to them with a concealed weapon, legal or not, trained or not. I have had people tell me that they do not want to take their children to events in the community center with someone with a concealed weapon, trained or not, or at heated meetings, or in this building. I've had staff, over the years, indicate the same issue. I believe it is a local issue. Law enforcement, if you look at the data, the majority of law enforcement folks do not want to have people in a town chamber, for example, with a concealed weapon. Now, it's almost like extortion. Yes, we can keep weapons, concealed weapons, out of a building or not by simply spending, you know, $150,000 per door to really be in tune with this particular legislation to keep guns out of buildings. So I feel very strongly that it is, yes, a local issue, and as I stated before, the League of Cities opposed this last year, the League of Cities opposes it in its current form, and I actually corresponded with the Lig today to clarify if they were still in opposition to it, and I received an email, which I forwarded to our Town Manager, it stated yes. So with that being said, I would like to call for a vote to oppose SB 1257 and send correspondence accordance to legislature as we have in the past when we have voted unanimously to oppose a particular bill. Thank you, Mayor.
Is there a second? Motion dies for none, a lack of a second.
I do have a comment.
Yes.
Thank you. I clearly hear what you're saying. I have a question. When you walk into the State Capitol, they have the metal detector set up, can you, concealed weapons, if you have a concealed license, can you carry it in the State Capitol?
No, but they have metal detectors and guards and their own security with them all the time.
So I, you know, I've got mixed emotions about this. I read too many articles about the concealed weapon, the licensed, permitted concealed weapon person being on site and saving someone's life time and time again, and it may just be the redneck in me, but I see absolutely no reason. I have full intentions of getting my permit and I have full intentions on carrying because it's a right. And so I truly believe it's an issue, and I also believe that it's something that can be good.
Okay. Any other comments?
Mayor, would it be possible for Captain Letourneau to weigh in on it?
I don't think that's necessary. We have a motion, and the motion did not get a second, so it's obvious that the council is not in favor of this, and I don't want to put the captain on the spot right now. Unfortunately, the captain can't be at every single meeting, or commission meeting, or special sessions, or the retreat, so very often we are on our own. All right. Then we will go on to summary of council requests, recent activities. I have a couple, of course, I'm always busy doing something. If anybody wants to go first, I appreciate that, you may go first. No? Okay. I do want to talk about my mayor's youth council, I'm so proud of these kids. We had an awesome day at the State Capitol with our tour guide, Senator John Kavanaugh. The students got to shadow the senator as he spoke to reporters and negotiated with the lobbyists. They attended a caucus meeting and a committee hearing on some bills. The students learned about how the bills become law and the many hurdles it must pass through. After a lunch on the lawn, courtesy of ASU, we traveled to MCSO's headquarters for an interesting tour of the building. James Estrada, MCSO's Community Relations Director, told us about the history of MCSO, Tent City, and the jail system. He also discussed the structure of the new building as a command center and 9/11 dispatch center. I want to extend my thanks to Sheriff Arpaio and his staff, Senator Kavanaugh, and thanks to our chaperones who gave up their whole day to be with us, Heather Ware, the NYC Coordinator, Angelica Giardino, a staff member, and a volunteer, Kalen Pierce. It was a very successful day, thanks to all of them. At the high school, I was once again the referee at the robotics tournament. Several schools participated in the day-long event, it was great to be with the students and meet some future engineers. I want to extend my congratulations to Town Resident Peter Volney for a very successful third annual concourse in the hills. It was an outstanding event with top-of-the-line sponsors like Barrett-Jackson, and I got to open the show with former racecar driver Bob Bondurant. Over 500 exotic cars were on the grass at Fountain Park. We were featured on Channel 10 and several other media sources, including Car Enthusiast Publications. All proceeds from the show will go to the Boys and Girls Club. Valentine's Day brought love once again to Fountain Park in the form of Love in the Hills, sponsored by Sammy Fine Jewelry. It was a fun event that brought people from various parts of the valley to participate. Channel Five was also there, and we were featured on their news show. There was also lots of pre-publicity showing the beauty of Fountain Hills. Thank you, Stephanie Bajorkman, owner of Sammy's, for this outstanding event and all the good publicity that it brought to our town. And both of those two events could have also been in economic development because what a great way to showcase our town to future residents who might come to one of these events. And that's all I have, and thank you. And now I will, did you have something? Want a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
And a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. We are then recessing upstairs.